I.
My deletion to comply of the United States of America.
Going in right order. Uh, roll call?
Okay, roll call. Jason Crasher?
Present.
Mike Magyar is excused. Katie Pritchard?
Present.
Terry Johnson is excused. Jeremy Linder? Jeremy? Birkelbeck? Christopher Farr?
Present.
Jason Crasher?
He already called him.
Oh, sorry. Let's see if we can get Jeremy. Jeremy Linder?
Can you hear me now?
There we go, we got you now, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, um, we have a, have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is, or anybody like to make any changes?
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
So we have a second?
I second it.
Have a second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mind people?
Aye.
All right, um, business from the public, this is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use planning issues or county concern that is not on the agenda. I don't see anybody in public, nope, all right, moving on. Um, item one, clear and present, or clear and objective standards work session.
All right, thank you, and Rhona Field put up the presentation, please? So, um, as you recall, we are required under House Bill thirty-one ninety-seven, or maybe it's Senate Bill thirty-one ninety-seven, House Bill, I think, to adopt clear and objective standards in our rural residential lands and unincorporated communities by July first of two thousand and twenty-five. So, uh, last month, we reviewed some of the definitions and proposed changes in Article One. Uh, today, we're here to talk about, uh, part of Article Two. Article Two will be handled, uh, this month and next month with our changes. So, uh, Jay and I are gonna walk you through some of the items that we have been looking at. There's very detailed comparison matrix that's in your agenda package. That shows the existing language and the proposed, and then some different notes. Uh, the presentation will kind of highlight the, the, the major aspects of the changes that we're discussing. Uh, next slide, please? All right, so again, hey, it is Senate Bill thirty-one ninety-seven. So, um, again, we have to adopt by July first of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we are so far on track, uh, and hope to maintain that way. Uh, and you can go on to the next slide, please, Rhone. And one after that. Um, so this, uh, section, let's see, is really, uh, one of the changes that we would like to propose is that, um, we have seven different procedure types that we process applications under right now. Uh, normally, what you'll see are the very basic types throughout the state. A type one, which is ministerial, it's basically a checklist type of thing. You either meet the requirements or you don't. Um, and then that moves on, and it's issued usually over the counter very quickly. There's no public notice, no public hearing, no public input. Uh, type two is a little bit more administrative, but still staff review level. There's a little bit more discretion, uh, that would be a conditional use permit. Uh, type three are your quasi judicial hearings, which should include, uh, variances, subdivisions, and, um, then you have a type four, which are the legislative hearings where you're actually addressing policy issues. They're usually code amendments or map amendments and, uh, deal with either our zoning code or our comprehensive plan. Uh, again, we have seven different types and, uh, which include the type one. We have three type two uses. We have the type two that has a public notice but no public hearing. We have a type two R that has a public notice and a published ad but no public hearing. And then we have a type two A, which is, um, public notice, public ad, and a public hearing. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please, Rhone. Uh, so we are looking to reduce that and go down to four types that, uh, of procedures that we're gonna use. So with our type one, this is what we commonly call the, the development permit. When we issue a development permit for a new house, it doesn't really give you the ability to build anything. It's really a zoning review. We're checking to make sure that what you wanna do is allowed in the zone. We're checking your setbacks, we're checking your building height, and then we're identifying, um, any other permits that you might need, whether it's a geologic hazard permit, a floodplain permit, um, anything like that. So we would like to split this process apart, this type one, and just have a zoning review form that we just use, that is strictly zoning review. Type one, where you're actually reviewing something, um, and giving, making more of a determination would be your geologic hazard permit, your floodplain permit, your lot of records, when you do a property line adjustment, something that gets reviewed and approved. Uh, so we wanna split that process apart. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please, Rhone. Uh, we're gonna, oh, I forgot about the type one C. We're gonna eliminate that. Um, it was something that a previous director put in place that, um, was to internally track things. Some of the type one permits are a little bit more complex, and they, we're tracking this, and we're just gonna eliminate that. It's never been put in the code, um, there's really not a need for it. It's either a type one or it isn't, so. Um, next slide, please, Rhone? All right, uh, and then we talked about the type two uses that we have. So, um, these are typically your conditional use permits and your partitions that we see. And, uh, the standard type two is a ten day public comment period, uh, there's a written public notice that goes out, and then if you wanna appeal, a decision that's made by the director, that would go to the hearings officer. Next slide, please, Rhone? Uh, the type two A, this is the one that has the public hearing associated with it. And this is really a quasi judicial use. So we want to take the type two A and just say it's type three, which is really what it is, instead of calling it apart as a different type of type two use. Um, the process would not change, there's still the written public comment notice and the public comment period. There's still a published ad, we still put a sign on the property, there's still a public hearing. Those, um, appeals would go to the Board of Commissioners, as they do now. And that decision on a conditional use and a variance would be, um, still continued to be made by the hearings officer. And the only thing that would change is that, instead of calling it type two A, we would call it type three, which is what it is, quasi judicial. Uh, next slide, please, Rhone? And then type two R, this is, um, some weird hybrid thing that is somewhere in the type two range. Um, it's, it requires more advertising than a standard type two, but you don't get the public hearing, uh, which you would with a two A. So again, we're just looking to eliminate two R, and the uses that are two R right now would be split. They would either go down to a type one, depending on what they are, or they would just go down to a type two, which is public comment but no public hearing. The rest of the process would stay the same, um, the, you, case would, or the case would be determined by the director. The appeal goes to the hearings officer. And where we typically see these uses, um, there's, they're only in a handful of zones, I think seven zones. Uh, they're usually tied to public utilities or communication facilities or dredge material management. So, uh, we're not talking about things like businesses or multifamily or anything like that. It's more of your, um, I guess you would call it kind of utilitarian use, I guess. So again, just eliminate that and reclassify the type two R uses. Uh, next slide, please? Uh, type three quasi judicial, so a quasi judicial is where, um, the decision maker, whether that's you as a planning commission reviewing a subdivision, or the hearings officer looking at, uh, conditional uses and variances, you are acting as the judge over somebody's request, basically, is what a quasi judicial use is. Um, so this process would stay the same. Again, we would pull those type two A into the type three. It's the same exact process, uh, that they go through now, except we're just gonna change the name. Uh, next slide, please, Rhone? And then, um, type four, you could have a quasi judicial type four hearing, where somebody has applied for a zone change or a land use designation change on their particular piece of property, or maybe a very small group of properties, so it's not where we would wholesale change the zone throughout the entire county. This is tied to a very specific piece of property or a couple pieces of property. Um, this process would stay the same, and, um, nothing would change with that. Uh, when you have a legislative, uh, action, a type four, where we're changing policy, and for example, as we're changing the code here, and this goes before, the pub, public hearings before your commission and the, and the Board of Commissioners, that's a legislative action. And that process, again, is gonna stay the same. Uh, when you have a legislative action like this, that covers, you know, basically the entire unincorporated county, you don't have to send individual notices to the property owners unless you are rezoning their property or taking away a use that's already allowed in their zone. And then you have to send what's called a measure fifty-six notice. And, um, there is very specific scary language that is required that says, uh, the classic county is, uh, considering changes to whatever that may affect the value of your property, and, uh, that's required language that we have to put in. Um, and you may have received those notices in the past or heard about them, we've done them a couple different times. But again, we're not proposing any changes to this. Um, so moving forward, if, if we stick with this plan, we would end up, again, with just the four basic types and then the zoning checklist when you come in to, to build something. So that was a very quick overview of that. I'm gonna stop, did anybody have any questions about any of those proposed changes? No, okay.
Well, I have a comment.
Yeah.
That's, I don't know, are we just kinda speaking out when we, when we have something, or are we gonna be more formal here? I'm not sure, but anyway, my, my comment is, and I've said it before, and I don't, I know it doesn't really pertain to this morning's meeting, but I just feel that the planning commission being, uh, uh, only responsible for reviewing, uh, subdivisions, uh, was a mistake, and that it takes, uh, the plan commission right now, it stands in as the, uh, the committee for public involvement. And so I think it would've been better, better to retain, uh, the hearings on variances and, uh, and, uh, conditional use permits, uh, with the planning commission first, so the public has more of a chance. I know they can go to the hearings officer, but we're people local here in the community, and people know us, and, uh, we're in different geographical areas, so we know those areas. And, um, it's just different when somebody's hired as a, as a hearings officer to take it up. And I don't, I don't think it serves the public very well for, uh, for participating in the planning process. So that's, that's a comment, so it's not really a question. But I'm glad you answered what an M fifty-six is, 'cause I had no idea what that was. It sounded like a weapon to me, but I'm, in, you know, I know it's easy to fall into the jargon and the, and the acronyms and all that, but it's really helpful if you spell it out for people like me, I didn't know.
Nobody spells it out, that's the actual jargon, but we will make note of that.
I know this is a, this is an attempt to simplify things, make things a little more one, two, three, four, instead of seven. Is it gonna make some of the lesser conditional uses or the lesser applications go through a more rigorous process? If we're taking away all these different options, someone comes in, I know for a house, they want something done, and it's a type one, but they're gonna be some more things that maybe your office can approve over the counter or come close to, is that gonna bump them into the next type two type, you know what I mean? As far as making it more difficult for people to get, um, that?
No, because with, with the, um...
Or more cost effective, or, uh, cost more?
It wouldn't cost more, we're not asking to raise any fees. Uh, the partitions, when we do our budget this year, we're gonna ask for that fee to be reduced based on the revisions we've already made to that process. Um, with the type twos, anybody who's a type two now that requires a ten day public notice is gonna stay a ten day public notice. So they're not gonna go to a public hearing, we're not running the ad, we're not posting a property, it's the same exact process. With the review uses, the two Rs, um, they will either go down to a two, which means we don't do the published ad, which we're required to do now. Yeah, but they still have a public notice, which they're required to do now. They would lose the, the published ad. Or if it doesn't need to be a two, we would push it down to a one, which would just be over the counter. And then the two A, which are the ones that have the public hearing associated with them, they are still gonna follow that same process. We're just gonna call it type three. The fee stays the same, the process stays the same, but it, the name of the procedure will change. So there shouldn't be anything, as we have gone through this, um, that would bump anybody up into a higher one than they already are now. And one of the things that we'll cover a little bit later in the presentation is that, um, right now, there's a pathway where the director can elevate certain types of type two uses, the ones that don't require a public hearing. But I, whoever is the director has the discretion to raise some of those up to a public hearing if they feel that there's gonna be a lot of public comment or pushback or anything like that. Um, we've tried to, I'm trying to remember what we did. We still have that language in there, we've tried to make it a little bit clearer so that it's not just, here are ten uses that the director can look at and say, well, I think that needs to be a type two A and go to a public hearing. I mean, either you classify those right now as public hearing, or you don't. And, because we have to eliminate discretion.
If I can add too, I think where this issue will be critical is when we do the big chart. 'Cause you'll, you'll be able to see, okay, right now it's a two R, it's gonna be a two or a one, and you'll see where it's going. The idea is to simplify where we can. So hopefully, we catch those and we don't bump anyone up, that's the goal.
Uh, and as far as clear objectives, the, you know, if there is a list of what goes, instead of having it be an opinion, it should be, uh, clear and simple, because if I'm coming in for this, I know this is what I gotta go through. It's not, well, maybe in a week or two later, we hear that it's different and it goes to one or the other. I like the clear, clear and present objectives, that there's, maybe you can, that's questionable, that might require a public hearing if we just, we're not gonna be able to list everything, but...
Yeah.
Make each either a one, two, three, or four, and, and just cross the board. That way, anybody coming to apply knows what they're, they're getting into before they get into it.
Yeah, so for example, dog kennels are one of the types of uses that may be listed as a two, so no public hearing, but depending upon the director's decision, it could go to a public hearing. So those are things where you just either make them type two or type three. I mean, if, if a dog kennel is gonna be that noisy and cause that much disruptions, then it should be public hearing.
Absolutely.
So, so that's the type of stuff that we're trying to eliminate, is where there's a lot of discretion without any clear standards of how that decision gets made.
Just two quick questions. In, in the, um, in the written part of the packet here, you, you referred to table two point one. Is, is that gonna be the chart that shows the, 'cause I didn't find a table two point one in here. It's referred to in a couple different places, and, um, and I don't know that I'll be able to find one of those places, but I, I was, well, maybe it's this, maybe it's this chart here that isn't labeled on the packet page twenty. I, I don't know if that was it, or...
Yeah, it starts on nineteen.
Starts on nineteen, and it is labeled table two point one.
Oh, it is? Well, the only other question I have then, um, oh, I see, yeah, it is, okay. Um, sorry about that. Um, the other question is on days. You, you might wanna clarify whether you mean business days or calendar days, and that's throughout here. There's some ten day things, there's some four, there's one with fourteen days, there's one with fifteen. Um, you know, you might almost wanna include both, so that people are aware, hey, yeah, there's this many days, but only so many business days, or whatever, but that often can be unclear to people. It might throw them off on getting things in on time.
Okay, yeah, most of our days are calendar days.
Uh-huh.
Uh, so...
Yeah, that's what I assumed.
Yeah.
'Cause usually it's specified if it's business days, but, but I think it doesn't hurt to have it actually written out, so it's real clear.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed changes to the procedures?
Just so I understand, that, that table on, uh, two point one, I guess it was, that is the proposed going forward, where it shows the differences, where it would be a one, two, or a three, is that correct?
That's correct, we don't actually have a table like that now in our code.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rhone, if you would go ahead and move on to the next section. Keep going, keep going, keep going, there we go, all right. So we're gonna talk a little bit about some, uh, proposed procedural changes. Uh, one of the items that we have in our process is the applicant neighborhood meetings. Did I miss? Oh, pre-application meeting, I'm sorry, pre-application meetings, all right. So we have procedural requirement for pre-application meetings for certain types of applications. We're adding, um, destination resorts that would require a pre-application meeting. And we are looking at major conditional uses, which may also require a pre-application meeting. The pre-application meeting is, is a fairly simple process that brings in any of the stakeholders, such as state agencies, county agencies, departments, cities, et cetera, that may be impacted by a, uh, potential use. And so we want to clarify and add to those definitions. Um, the other thing that, um, we are asking is that a summary of that meeting be included. And we're giving a little bit extra time for the summary to be provided. That summary helps the staff and the applicants in moving forward to the next level, the actual application itself. I find them really helpful, or have found them really helpful, because usually we can find out what the hurdles are going to be early on. Um, so we're, we're trying to encourage that anytime we think that there's going to be, uh, any significant, um, changes or, or conditions that we wanna take a look at there. Uh, next one. Uh, applicant neighborhood meetings. I have not had the pleasure of participating in an applicant neighborhood meeting. And, uh, they are, uh, designed to provide the community an opportunity to speak directly with the applicant, uh, perhaps have the applicant hear some of the concerns ahead of the actual public hearing. And it does provide them an opportunity to adjust or modify to address some of the concerns of the neighbor before it gets to the actual hearing itself. Uh, I can see where this could be a lot of fun, and I could see where this could be very, very difficult. But it is a, a process that I, I think does give the, the applicant a better understanding of what the neighborhood could, concerns are going to be in a different setting than either the hearings, hearings officer or in front of a, a, a planning commission. Um, so if you move to the next one, all right. We are going to, wait a minute, is that the right one? Thank you. Our list of uses that require applicant neighborhood meeting, we're going to revise which ones where it is required. We have some procedural changes in there to, um, help clarify how they are conducted. We're eliminating the, uh, language where that allows the director to determine a wider notification area. So for instance, uh, our current language allows the community development director to say, we think this has a, a larger impact, so we're gonna require you to go out a quarter mile or something further than what is required. Uh, again, there's discretion there, and it isn't completely clear on, uh, when that is actually done. There's some minor changes to the notification time, and it does allow staff attendance, but it's not mandatory. Um, I can see, or again, not having had an opportunity to participate, I can see where the staff could be put in a difficult position to defend the application in, in that sort of setting. Why are you allowing this, et cetera, et cetera? So it's not that we don't want to, but it does sometimes put staff in a, a difficult position. Um, all right, appeals. That's yours, go ahead.
All right, so any questions, I guess, about the changes to the, um, pre-application meeting or the neighborhood applicant meeting?
I, I have a question about it, um, I guess, Mike, or maybe it's a concern. Uh, how does, if, if a staff person doesn't attend the meeting, and I, I get your point on that, um, how that could, um, be awkward, to put it that way. Um, but how do you, um, ensure that the meeting was conducted fairly and that the, um, the comments that those in attendance made were, were fairly represented in their summary? Uh, is it, there's not gonna be a tape recording of this, or some kind of recording of the meeting, or...
They're not required to record it, and staff is not required to attend these now. We try to when we can, but sometimes we can't.
Yeah, um, but I'm just, you know, I, I don't see how, um, a person that wants to build their project is gonna be very fair in representing the, uh, comments and concerns that maybe a resident has that, that really doesn't want the project there. Kinda hard to, to write out an argument against what you're trying to do. Uh, anybody would be in a difficult position to do a, a fair job on that. And so, you know, I, I thought ways around it would be, I guess, I guess any community member that makes comments could, could mail those indirectly to the planning commission, um, and it would be included as...
It'd become part of the record. Any, any of those comments that they wanted to submit in writing, uh, would become part of the record. The summary of the, the events would also become part of the information that's presented to either the hearings officer or the planning commission, or Board of Commissioners, depending upon where the application ultimately ends up. Um, the, the hard part is, uh, you don't necessarily get a complete review of a meeting like that from either side of an application. And so it, and that's why, again, it's, it's essentially an oppo, opportunity for the applicant to learn ahead of time to try to adjust. It's not that they're going to resolve those items necessarily, but it does certainly make the applicant aware of, well, the neighborhood is very concerned about tree removal, here's what I can do to, uh, accommodate that. Um, so it, it's not a formal action, there's no action, it's just basically a listening session, if you will. And, and the summary comes in simply as that, as a summary. And the people who are potentially opposed to that application, all of their comments still are presented. It doesn't negate any of their comments or thoughts from being included in the deliberations that happen. So, I, I understand, but I, as a, as a staff person in one of those situations, I have been in a past life, um, in, as a planner, in the situation where, um, no matter what I wrote down as a summary, someone was not going to be happy. And, and so, they, they aren't designed to solve the problem. And so that's why the people would still have the opportunity to participate in, in the normal hearing review process. You've, you've had some here... You've you've had some here. What are your reactions to that as well? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I mean, like I said, uh, it's not mandatory for staff to attend these. Sometimes if we are available, we, one of us will go. A lot of times, there isn't a staff person available. Sometimes the meetings are at six or seven in the evening or they're on Saturdays and, you know, staff also has things that they need to do in their own lives during evenings and weekends. So this is a, this is a meeting in my viewpoint, even though the county's requiring it, it's not our meeting. We're not hosting it. We're not noticing it. We're not staffing it. We're not anything with that. We're not there to mediate. We're not there to record it. We're not there to take notes. It is a chance for the applicant and the neighborhood to meet. Um, I mean, if you want to make it mandatory that staff has to go, that's your call, um, but.
I personally think this is kind of a ridiculous requirement. I mean, that's. You could create a hostile environment having something like this that nobody has jurisdiction over, nobody has control over. And like, like you said, you don't have to report back. So what's? What's the point of requiring somebody to ask their neighbors what they think and have a meeting? If there's no requirement for. A record, uh, somebody there to to run the meeting, to to report back. I mean. Say I'm going to have a meeting and I want to do something and my neighbors come and it. It goes fine. I can report it back. Hey, everything went great. We're good to go. Or if it goes terrible, I can still report back. Everything went great. We're good to go. I mean, there, it's kind of like a, to me, it seems like a more time consuming, pointless meeting. Yeah, I I don't think it's a bad idea for somebody wanting to do something like that to have a meeting, but that's. Forcing them to ask somebody's opinion when it should be done in a different setting as far as I believe. I, if we're going to do it, I think it should be. At a hearing or or something else. I don't think that. Or staff members should run it. I I mean, I don't think that this is. A great idea. I I. I mean, I've been on both sides of it and I don't think that. I don't know. I don't think requiring somebody to have a public meeting where there's no rules or no requirements. It's kind of like just a more time consuming. For nothing purpose.
Well, I would disagree. I think that there are rules. If you read through what's actually in the code, there are very clear rules about how the meeting is run, how the notices are sent. But it's not the county running the meeting. We are not the project applicant. We're not there to represent the po- project applicant. We're not there to represent the people who come to the meeting. We are on nobody's side on that issue. It's a chance for someone who is proposing something that is. Possibly of impact to the neighborhood. To give them a chance to meet with the neighborhood and let the neighborhood be aware of their plans before they even submit an application. The meeting summary, the meeting comments, the meeting notes all have to be turned in with the application package in order for the application to be complete. And that becomes, as Jay said, part of the record. So. If you turn in your summary that says the meeting was wonderful, we held hands and saying kumbaya. And what really happened was people were screaming at you because you were destroying their neighborhood. The people who were screaming at you are going to be looking at that and they will be saying, I'm sorry, this is not how the meeting went. And, you know, so, yeah, there's no recording. If they choose not to make a recording, maybe we require it to be recorded. Maybe we require everybody to send submit an MP four video or, you know, sound file that we can use to actually listen to it. Or we require everything to be virtual so that it can be done, you know, over Zoom and there's a recording that gets made. Um, those are other options, but this, this is not the county's meeting. This is not staff giving you the formal presentation. We're not making a recommendation to anything.
Or requiring it.
Depending on what the use is. And so it's not. Something where we're going to come in and say, oh, you want to build a house. No, you got to have an applicant neighborhood meeting. This isn't a design review committee. These are for things that are significant, so.
If I could jump in, the examples are multifamily developments consisting of more than four attached residential units abutting a single family zone. So when you've got a multifamily development adjacent to you, that that has traditionally been deemed something that the neighborhood is going to want to hear about. Um, commercial or industrial development that abuts a residential zoning district. If you've got a commercial store that's going to go in next to you, people have viewed that as an important opportunity uh to provide comment. Um, subdivisions. It does say all subdivisions, so maybe there's some issues that we want to deal with it. We don't have a lot of subdivisions. We do mostly partitions. Um, cluster and planned unit developments, transfer of development rights. Those are things where you're bringing density into a smaller area. And that has been something that has created some consternation with neighborhoods. Um, destination resorts. We haven't had any of those, but one of those would have the potential of creating some some fairly significant uh impacts. And quasi judicial map amendments. Um, a- a- as far as the procedures go, there were some procedures outlined. Here's what you have to do at the meeting. You have to have maps. You have to have site plans. You have to have information about the sizes, heights of the structures, setbacks. Basically, you're essentially laying out, here's what I would like to do. Um, expected impacts, any mitigation and an opportunity for the public to comment. It doesn't get into, you have to have a debate. Doesn't get into, you have to resolve everything. And and I I think in certain circumstances, maybe we want to look at when it is required and when it's not. That might be a way to to address some of your concerns too, is to say, it's not going to be for every conditional use permit. But just get a clear understanding of when it is required.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it's a bad idea to notify the public and to have these meetings. I I I really don't. Just the way that some of these things can go. I mean, I, we've all seen some very. Um. Not so nice people wanting to propose some of these things and we've also seen some very angry neighbors that really don't want anything where they're at.
Yep.
And to throw this out to them and say, hey, you have to do this. You have to invite them. You have to allow them into wherever it is. And there's no real, I mean, it. I I get it, but it's it's a recipe for disaster in some, since some instances that we're requiring. But, yeah, I don't. I think that if we require something, that we should have a representation there.
Well, you know, I. You know, that initially I was kind of looking at from the side of being fair to the community and they're going to have this new project in there and to give them a chance to to talk. But I think partly what you're saying is it, this is actually more for the applicant. Because they get a preview of what the concerns might be. And they might then decide, well, you know, I don't really need to do it that way. I could adjust it a little bit. And it actually smoothes out the process. So when you look at it as something to the advantage of the applicant. It actually does make sense because, um, you know, if it's all kumbaya, that's that's fine, but if there are some real significant animosity toward it. They might be able to come up with some ideas of making it more palatable. Which will streamline the whole process as it goes through the planning.
That that's really how I viewed this issue, not that it was going to solve anything, but it would give the applicant a a. I'm going to put my finger in the wind and see how bad the gusts are going to be against me. And and they can then choose to modify, change, or withdraw, even before they've. Done anything. Um. I've been at meetings where it gets nasty. And and that, there is always that possibility. And, um. You know, anytime you open up a development review to the public, the public can react responsibly, intelligently, or not. And that it's very circumstantial and and so it's it's impossible for us to predict when when it would become a hostile situation and when staff should be there. Although Gail and the staff have been here a long enough time where they can probably predict a few of those where those things might happen, so. Um. We can clarify that a little further for for future discussion. I certainly, you know, understand your concerns about not wanting to waste another month's time. But if we can look at it as a way to maybe solve some problems before we get to the next level, that might be a a better way to approach it.
Yeah, I have a question. So why would it, why is this a required physical meeting instead of giving the public an opportunity to write a letter in? I know even some neighbors won't stand up because they won't, they won't stand up and confront anybody, but they will write in and we've all seen that. Why why is it that they have an actual meeting? And I, like I said, I don't I don't think it's a bad idea, the meeting portion of it, to gather information. But why isn't it not allowed for them, okay, builder A, you have to send a notice to everybody here that they have. Ten, twenty, thirty, whatever days it is to write in any of your concerns and then that all gets presented to the planning department. Because then you guys can read both sides of it unbiasedly and take in all of the comments instead of. Builder A reporting that, yeah, somebody was upset, but they were okay with this and maybe they're not getting fully represented.
There's still that public comment period, so people can attend a pre-app, uh, neighborhood applicant meeting. They could send in comments before the meeting to us, to the applicant. They could have their neighbors read a comment in at the applicant meeting. But once the application is formally submitted, then the county has an obligation to send out public notices with the ten day public comment period. Or, you know, if it's a public hearing, then there's, I think, a twenty day public comment period before beforehand. Um, where they can submit comments to be included in the package that goes to the hearings officer or the planning commission. So there are both opportunities to do that. I mean, the other option is. So this was adopted, the requirement for an applicant neighborhood meeting was adopted uh in twenty seventeen and this was done. Let me think of the word I want. It's not a consolation prize, but um. In consideration of the fact that the county had eliminated the um southwest coastal citizen advisory committee. And the design review process that was taking place in the southwest corner of the county. And so this was kind of a compromise that they came up with, that they added the language about the neighborhood applicant meeting. So before that, uh, as far as I know, there wasn't that requirement. So, I mean, you could take it out completely and just let it go. Um, or we can continue to revise it and make changes.
But this isn't unique to Clotset County, is it?
No, lots of other jurisdictions have requirements for applicant neighborhood meetings.
Well, what's your opinion? Is it? Has it helped applicants kind of? Be ready upfront and maybe come up with a modification? I mean, have you seen that happen where it? Played out well?
Do our cities require it?
Pardon?
Do our cities require it?
Some cities do, yeah. I don't, I don't know about here in Clotset County. I would suspect Cannon Beach may. Your heart may. I don't know. Um, I've seen meetings that go both ways. Uh, we had one. It was going to be a variance request. They held the applicant neighborhood meeting. They seemed to be well received. There was actually a video of the meeting that we watched. And when it came in, um, there was a lot of opposition and the case was appealed. And then there was mediation. It went all the way up to Luba and there was mediation and then they resolved it. So in that case, even though we weren't at the meeting, we saw the video, which I don't believe was altered. I don't think it was a fake video. Um. Everything seemed to be going okay. There seemed to be understanding, consensus. Everything seemed fine. So and then we've seen other meetings where, you know, everybody comes, they ask a lot of questions. Sometimes there's misunderstanding or miscommunication about what a proposed project is and a lot of times that will help clarify that for neighbors. Because, you know, they they hear rumors in the community or on social media that this is what's happening and then they get to the meeting and they're all fired up and they find out, well, no, this really isn't happening. This is something different than what we thought it was. So. You know, it can go either way. And like I said, this was added into the code in twenty seventeen as a compromise. Um, there's no requirement that we have to have an applicant neighborhood meeting, so.
Well, I thi- I think it's okay to to leave it in. I I think it's just another avenue to try to get both sides to come together maybe a little bit. But I do understand that it's another step, but it could be an advantageous step. Could could save an applicant some headaches, so. I don't know. And then you've you've met, you let the public feel like they are more involved. That's that's what worries me is that the public isn't involved enough in a lot of what goes on in the county. And so I'm all for encouraging anything that draws the public in and and lets them. Get their ideas and uh and feelings about things out out in front of the.
Mr. Chair, if I could add too, since this was an area that I worked on, I'm certainly willing to take your comments. Look at some other counties and see if I can put together some alternatives for you to consider for this section. And and, I mean, I. Again, we're not making any final actions today, but if you'd like some additional options to look at there, I'm certainly willing to try and give you something to look at.
I I would like to see that. I would like to see maybe, I mean, even if it's needed or not. I mean, that's. We have. Public appeals, the the mail-in stuff, I I think, and then the hearings going forward. I mean. I don't know. I'm not sure it's going to change anybody's minds, like.
Let me, let me see what else I can find for for that. Again, we're not making final language determination here, but I'll put that back on my list of things to review and bring back to you.
Thank you.
That section.
Perfect.
I have just a couple, couple thoughts.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, um. I think what could be helpful on on this is a, maybe a little more definitive list on where it could be required and where it would not be. Um, I think there is a significant, significant difference between somebody building four apartments and somebody building forty or four hundred apartments. Um, I could see the use for this in very large projects. Um. You know, somebody wants to build a a resort that, I think, just about anywhere that they go, they would expect this to be. Part of the process and a lot of times big developments will do something like this, even if it's not required, just to try to. Um, it it's kind of a PR move. Um, but I don't, I I, but I think there's a line where for smaller projects where. The developer is, you know, a one man operation, just trying to, you know, make a living. And their project fits all of the. It's all of the, you know, legal boxes. Um, you're going to have some areas where if I wanted to build a a birdhouse onto adjacent property, there'd be people there with torches and pitchforks. So finding that balance, I think, is going to be. Important in my mind if it's going to be required. Um, otherwise, i- if it's not that specific and a little more appropriate. Um, I'm not opposed to it being a, or I mean, I am opposed to being a requirement. I wouldn't be opposed to it being optional, but. Um, the other question that I had is. Is uh, they have this meeting, they have to turn in the summary. What does that summary? If if the, if the application, everything is complete, looks good, there's no land use issues. All that is good, but the summary is basically um overwhelming, overwhelming opposition. From the neighbors just because they don't want something there. What bearing does that have on the rest of the process?
Excellent question. Um, as as the hearings officer reviews these sorts of things, they will look at whether or not the applicant has adequately addressed the criteria for the decision-making process. And the same would be true for the planning commission. If something comes before you and there's a a set of criteria that you need to use to make the determination. That public record includes, I don't want it. Well, I don't want it doesn't necessarily. Equate with, it doesn't meet the criteria that we have to review. And 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 so as a staff person, I'm always going to go back, what does the criteria say? And just saying I don't want it doesn't mean that it doesn't still meet the criteria. And and ha- the conditions, have the conditions been laid out in such a manner as to address things like noise and traffic and dust? And all of those things that uh we typically review when we're looking at these types of things. Um, so it's going to fall back on our ability to look specifically at the criteria. I don't want it is certainly an issue or a concern, but again, we are bound by the code and what the code requires us to take a look at. And so, um, to to get back to your point, the the sheer number of I don't want it is is fine, but is if there's something. is, is fine, but is, if there's something specific, "I don't want it because it's going to create noise." Or "I don't want it because it's going to create more traffic." Something more specific, then it becomes part of the decision that the, or the criteria that the, uh, hearings officer or planning commission will have to use. Um, so it, it's part of that, "I don't want it," is, it's all part of that. We've heard it, um, a bazillion times. And so, I, it's just, it is part of the record, but it, I, again, will always draw us back to what is the criteria for our decision. So it, it's there, it's part of it, but it's not the weighty part of the factors.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion about the pre-application meeting or the applicant neighborhood meeting? All right. Then Ron, if you'll go to the next slide, please. And, uh, the slide after that. Uh, so with regard to appeals, there is not a lot that we can change. A lot of this is spelled out in ORS in terms of how appeals are conducted. Uh, we did create a new intent section to help better explain why we have an appeal process. Uh, we're also looking to change the appeal deadline from twelve days to fourteen days. Um, twelve just seemed a little bit of an odd number, and fourteen days seems to be a little bit more standard. Um, right now, there's a provision in the code that says, "Once you submit your application, you've got five more days to provide any additional information." Uh, we would like to eliminate that. There's no requirement for that, uh, in state statute. And, uh, we would be increasing the number of days that you have to place your appeal. Uh, we did some rearranging, just to help clarify how the procedure process works. And then we tried as much as we could to remove extraneous wording or things that were kind of obscure in how they were worded or had complex grammar, just to make, make the, uh, section read a little bit easier for people who may not be attorneys. And those are the changes that we're proposing for the appeals. Are there any questions about that?
I have one question here on packet page thirty-eight. It's, it's just unclear to me how, how to read this. Uh, under item four in the, in the review bu, in the revised wording section, the middle column there of the, of the sheet, uh, it says, "Action by the review body shall be decided by a majority vote of its members present at the meeting in which review was made and shall be taken either at that or any subsequent meeting." So what constitutes a majority vote if it's taken up at a, at a, in a later meeting, a subsequent meeting? Um, let's say there were four out of five members at the first meeting, but for some reason, they didn't, they, I don't know, they put off a decision to the next meeting or something? And then what if five members are at the next meeting? What, what number are they using? It's just, it's not clear to me whether it's the number at any particular meeting or is it at that first hearing meeting? It's kind of a technical point. It's kind of annoying, but.
It is, it is an interesting question, 'cause I've been involved where, uh, we're at a city council meeting, and they've got four members there, and they've already figured out that it's gonna be a two-to-two vote. And, and so I, I've, I've seen delays so that they can get the fifth person. So, um, but, yeah, it is an interesting question, and I don't know how, how that's, would be addressed.
We'll, we'll get some clarification on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody that wasn't at the original hearing did show up for the, the decision-making, uh, meeting or the meeting in which the decision will be made. I mean, it would seem like if they hadn't heard the, the testimony and everything, they, they shouldn't participate in the vote, but maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, so.
Any other questions about the appeals?
Eliminate the five additional days to provide additional information once an application is submitted. But if I submit an application today, even though, does that mean if that application's not complete, that I still have five more days to complete the application? Is that, so maybe someone's trying to get that fourteen-day or twelve-day period to start sooner without all the information there? Is that, is that kind of how I'm reading that, or is that not?
I don't know why we have five additional days, because once you submit your application, that should be it.
Shouldn't it be complete before it's accepted?
It should be complete, yeah. But in this case, we have this language in our code right now that says, "You can sign the application and not give us any of the documentation, but as long as you sign the application and pay your fee, we'll give you five additional days to turn in all the rest of your materials," so.
I mean, the only thing I can think of it is maybe you guys find something that, maybe you want more stuff, or.
We don't, if somebody's appealing it, we, we're not gonna ask for more stuff. I mean, this is your case that you want to appeal, because obviously, there was a decision made that was either based on a staff recommendation or a hearings officer or a planning commission decision that you are not agreeing with.
Gotcha.
So if you're looking to overturn our decision, we, it's not staff's job to help you write the appeal to overturn our decision.
It should be complete when.
It should be complete, yeah. All right. Any other questions about appeals? All right, then Ron, if you'll go to the next slide, please. And the slide after that. All right. So conditional uses, um, this is probably one of the, um, the majority along with partitions of the work that the planners process. Uh, right now, we have two types of conditional uses. We've got the two, which is just the public notice, and then there's a decision, uh, made, uh, by the director. Or you have what is currently a two-A, that we wanna move to a type-three, which is the one that has the, uh, public hearing. And so we just wanna say, the type-two, we'll call them minor to differentiate, and the major would be a type-three. Same process, same fees, same applications, uh, just the title of them would change. Um, we put into the proposed code changes the list of information that is specified on the application, so that people can understand why that's listed on the application. Um, let's see, what else are we gonna do? We also, as I discussed earlier, want to eliminate that list of type-two uses that can get elevated by the director up to a public hearing. And either those will just be classified straight off as requiring a public hearing, or they'll just be listed as requiring public notice, but no public hearing. Um, and then we would create a new, uh, table two-point-four, which I don't believe that we did put in the code, proposed changes, uh, simply 'cause we haven't gone through that process yet. Uh, but we would create a new table in article-two that would basically spell out all the different uses that are permitted throughout the county and whether or not they would be major type-three uses or minor type-two uses. So those are the changes that we're proposing for conditional use. And any questions about that?
I have, I have a question. I th- I think it's in the right section there. Um, packet page fifty there, uh, talks about ex- expiration of a conditional use approvals. And, um, I was just, I wasn't sure, under item two-B there, there are changes to the project. So, um, a one-year extension may be granted by the original decision-maker upon a finding that, B, there are changes to the project. Um, and then that crops up on the next page under item six-B. But, um, how much of a change to the project ca- can go in under the original permit and still get an extension? Another, just, they, they, they got the approval initially, but they haven't gone ahead. Maybe they found out something on the property as they started into the project or something. So, um.
That was supposed to say there are no changes to the project.
Oh. Well, that would be a big difference, but, um, yeah, it was just, that would make sense. That, that would be clear, but if it's this way, it seems like it needs a little expansion on what the.
Yeah, I think it was supposed to say there are no changes to the project.
Okay. And, um, on that business about extension, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda flabbergasted when, when you add up all the extension possibilities to a project, that, that it could be hanging out there for eleven years before you, um, I mean, that just... It, the farther it goes out, is there a, a need, if the extension is allowed, for the proponent to show that, for example, that, um, the public utilities can handle the project now? May- maybe so much has happened in the intervening time that now the water system can't support this project anymore? So where does that get looked at?
So if it's a conditional use that's not on farm or forest land, then that is, uh, put in here, it's, uh, two-C. That says there are still adequate public facilities and services and traffic, transportation capacity to serve the project. So the one where you get into the possible eleven-year scenario, that's farm and forest land. And typically, they aren't served by a water system, and they would never be served by a sewer system.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they may still have roadway issues.
They may have fire.
They may have fire. Um, but they would still need to have, before they get their final permit to build, they would still have to have that agency sign off. It says they have approval from the water district, uh, the environmental health for the septic and from the fire district.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments about conditional uses? All right. I think that, that was it for the presentation, wasn't it, Ron?
Oh, the review use. That was one we've already talked about. Go ahead and flip the next page. Um, as, uh, Director Henrickson noted, there is a process known as a review use in about seven different classifications. Most of them deal with utilities and communication and transportation systems in some development districts, some conservation districts, and some natural districts. It's very random. I don't quite understand where it came from. It essentially is a hybrid of a two and a three, type-two, type-three. And so our goal here would be to eliminate this, yes, hybrid, and classify them either as twos or threes.
Twos or ones.
Twos or ones, excuse me, you're right. And then, um, what I've done with them is I've gone through all of the particular uses. And so, for instance, um, uh, certain types of road uses in most districts are a type-one. Uh, in some districts, they're a type-two. So we're gonna try and figure out where they fit for our most reviewed in other zoning districts, essentially, to try and make them consistent with other zoning districts. Um, the goal is to not make them harder. The goal is to try to simplify where we can. But this is a, a very unique process. It just requires an additional public notice to the newspaper, which is expensive, and, and our fees don't necessarily cover it. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at it. Go ahead and flip to the next one. So type-R reviews are just a handful of uses. Um, boat ramps, for instance, uh, are in some places type-ones, in some places type-twos, in some places type-threes. So the goal would be try, to try to make them as consistent as they are in the other zoning, similar zoning districts. Next one? We're proposing the elimination of the two-R and moving them all to type-one and type-two. Next? That's for me.
All right. So that, could you go back to the previous slide? Thank you. Um, so as I said, we'll be discussing, uh, article-two again next month. We're gonna be looking at subdivisions, property line adjustments, and partitions. Uh, we're gonna be looking at temporary uses, and I forget what else. But, um, again, trying to make changes to make the code as objective and clear as possible and to simplify the process as much as possible. Uh, so that's what we'll be looking at. Um, we will, we have some homework items, Jay and I, about things we need to look at for clarification and bring you some additional information back on that next month as well, so. And that concludes that presentation. I don't know if there are any more questions or discussions, but I know that was a lot of information that we put out there, um, so.
Wait till next month.
It was, um, I thought it was gonna be an easy packet, and it turned out to be quite a process. But I do have one question on, on this, um, type-R or review-type application, permitted with review. You know, I always wondered, like, this got established, and all those zones that were shown there are, had water involved, um, pretty much. And so I'm wondering, if somebody came up with this, what was the reasoning? 'Cause if you just cut something out, it seems like you should look back and say, "Well, why was this here in the first place?" May- maybe there was some logic to it. And, and one question in particular that, I don't know what the answer is there, but on packet page fifty-six, section two-point-five-zero-three-zero, "requirements for development and use permitted with review." And, um, in the old wording, uh, down near the bottom of that, um, that, that left column on the page there, it talks about, um, "Consideration shall be given to the cumul- cumulative effects of the proposed action and other development in the area on big game habitat developments, requiring state and federal permit are subject to the consistency review procedure set forth in section two-point-seven." Anyway, my, my question is, if we eliminate this review-type, um, procedure, and it goes to, they all go to either type-one or type-two, are, is that section about big game habitat and consistency review procedure, is that mirrored in the type-one and type-two for those kinds of projects?
I need to look at that.
Yeah.
I, I don't have an answer for you.
Yeah, type-one, usually not type-two. The conditional uses do have language in there, uh, for resource zones that require you to look at big game habitat?
'Cause I was thinking, maybe that's why they're just all around the water, 'cause a lot of, you know, wildlife goes to where there's water. They don't wanna be too far from it. Um, so maybe there's something in there, but maybe it can be resolved another way, you know?
I'll look at that.
Okay. Any commissioners online have any other questions, comments, concerns?
I do not.
No, thank you. You guys covered it quite thoroughly.
Okay. We look forward to your answers next month and, and the other half of the presentation. Uh, moving on, uh, project status report.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, uh, here really just to answer any questions that you might have about this. Uh, you'll see that the Goal Five update was approved by the board at the end of January, and we're just awaiting acknowledgement from DLCD on that one. And our community plans are scheduled for public hearings, uh, beginning tomorrow night. And the second public hearing, uh, if it moves forward, will be at the end of the month, on February twenty-eighth. And, um, our housing amendments, we held a public information meeting on January seventeenth, and we will be taking those to a board work session tomorrow evening as well. That begins at five o'clock. And clearing objective standards ongoing.
I have one other thing. Last month, we were asked to, uh, bring back some clarifications on the geohazard zones and as far as who can, uh, prepare those reports. Uh, we have a draft of that, but because of the short timing between this month and last month, uh, we were unable to make the deadline to notify DLCD, so that's been pushed back to next month. So we haven't forgotten the geohazard stuff, but the, the minor amendments that we talked about in January will be here in March.
Okay. Uh, director's report. Uh, director's report.
Uh, yeah, just a few items of note, um, staff is gonna be working on, uh, representing Clotset County on the Child Care Facilities Barriers Work Group. We are having our first meeting, uh, this Friday at nine AM, and this is, uh, similar to the project, the code audit that DLCD did for us a couple of years ago, looking at any, uh, regulatory barriers in our code, uh, where we were inconsistent with state statute with regard to childcare facilities. Uh, this is gonna be a much bigger statewide focus, uh, so we're gonna be serving on that committee. Uh, we talked about the, uh, housing amendments, we, reminder that there will be ethics training for both the planning commission and the fair board at the work session at five PM on February twenty-eighth, and my understanding is, that will be both virtually and in-person here at the Boynton Building. And then, just, uh, a few updates on staff changes, so obviously, Ian's, uh, last day was January twelfth, and we did, uh, hire David Cook and promoted him, well, he was hired, we promoted him to senior planner effective the beginning of this month, and we are currently in the process of revising the planner job description, and then we'll be, uh, putting that advertisement out sometime in the next few weeks, with the goal of having someone, uh, on staff to fill, backfill David's position, hopefully, maybe by May. That's all I have.
Uh, anything to get to the order? Nope, ain't nothing? All right, adjourn this meeting.
Have a great day, guys.